Good evening. I'm Peggy Cavam, President of the League of Women Voters of Minnetoka Eden Prairie Hopkins, and your Moderator for the Minnetoka City Council Candidate Forum. I would like to welcome all of you tonight on behalf of LWV, Minnetoka Eden Prairie Hopkins. The League of Women Voters, a volunteer nonpartisan political organization, encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League of Women Voters is celebrating our 100th anniversary. Representatives for LWV will be available in the lobby after this forum to meet with the candidates and the audience. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose in sponsoring meetings such as this to provide you with an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss issues that are important to you. There is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time and setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, feel free to contact the candidate directly. This event is now being broadcast live on community cable TV and will be rebroadcast repeatedly in its entirety. It will also be available by streaming video at the city website and www.lwvmph.org. Individual recording and photography that does not disrupt this event is allowed. Tonight's questions have been submitted by our live audience and online. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall in the same general area may be consolidated. Cards become the property of LWV. If the answer was unclear to you, feel free to submit a follow-up question or to ask the candidate after the forum. I will now introduce the candidates for the Minnetoka City Council. All four ward seats are up for election, as well as a special election for at-large seat B. So we have, starting on the left, Susan Carter for at-large seat B, Kizzy Cokely for ward four, Mike Happy for ward three, Brian Kirk for ward one, Paul Lehman for ward four, Rebecca Shack for ward two, Bradley Sheppi for ward three, and also Jonathan Kurzlake for ward two, who was unable to make it tonight. Thank you to the candidates and the audience for coming tonight. We will begin with two-minute opening statements. Following that, the candidates will have one minute to respond to questions submitted by the audience. Response order will be rotated. Our candidate forum will wrap up with one-minute closing statements from each candidate. So we'll start with Susan Carter with the opening statement for two minutes. It'll be timed. Susan?
Great. Thank you, and thank you to League of Women Voters for hosting this event and including me in the conversation. I appreciate it. For those who I haven't met, I have lived in Minnetoka for nine years, and I live in ward three with my husband Matt, my two children Hillary and Justin, and our dog Nash, always worth mentioning. I have spent my professional career in advocacy and stewardship for a variety of different issues throughout my life: domestic violence, housing, women's issues, health, you name it. And I think my ability to represent unheard voices and to find solutions together with the people most impacted by an issue are the skills that inform the work that I've been doing on city council. And some of the issues that I care deeply about, but also our issues residents care deeply about of late have been affordable housing, resourced infrastructure so every resident can have quality services, and, you know, that balance between natural resources and needed development, which is ongoing in our city. And I would just say, I get the "why are you running?" question a lot. I answered it a variety of ways, but this is what I'll say. In my nine years in Minnetoka, I have felt seen and heard. I have felt embraced by my community. And I have neighbors who show up when weather is bad or times are hard. I have neighbors who show up to celebrate milestones and help collectively raise our young people. I feel like I belong, and I run for city council so that all residents have a place. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Kizzy Cokely.
Let's talk Minnetoka. I'm Kizzy Cokely, and I'm running for city council, fourth ward seat. My husband Cory and I are proud parents of a Clear Spring Elementary student and two Minnetoka High School graduates. We've owned our home off of Excelsior Boulevard on Hilltop Terrace for 11 years. I am a member of Minnetoka Housing Committee and Hopkins Multicultural Committee. My professional background is in human services, domestic violence prevention, and criminal justice reform. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Metro State University. I have worked as a volunteer, as a grassroots organizer through Take Action Minnesota on the Justice for All campaign, where I was a leader with Take Action. Through that program, I've learned to, it takes people to build power. I have helped shape a national movement that worked with Target Corporation to change in their hiring policies and make criminal backgrounds checks fair. In addition, I have worked on a national, in addition, I have worked on a national policy in the state of Minnesota called "Ban the Box," where private and public employers cannot use discriminatory practices where they ask you about your criminal history before they offer you the job. As part of my education at Metro State, I chose to do my three-month intern at an overnight homeless shelter in Minneapolis called Simpson Housing, where I got a chance to talk with residents and learn the causes and effects of being homeless and how to create solutions and policies as it relates to housing that is more affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mike Happy.
Hi, everyone. Happy Rosh Hashanah. My name's Mike Happy, and that's happy with an E. I have to make sure people spell it correctly because with a last name like mine, you can imagine I've taken quite a bit of ribbing and heard a lot of jokes. I actually had somebody do something, asked me a question that I've never been asked before about my name. When I was door knocking a little while ago, somebody said, "So, do you actually like your last name?" Yeah, I like my last name. So, thanks to everybody for coming out tonight. Thanks for the League for sponsoring this. I'm a Minnesota boy. I grew up in South Minneapolis. My wife Sarah and I have been married for 31 years, and we've called Minnetoka our home for 15 years. We raised our three kids here. They went through the public schools, the Plymouth-Wezeta School District that we're in. I put myself through college and graduated from St. Thomas with a degree in business. I don't think self-funding college is something kids can do today, but with a couple of part-time jobs and a bunch of student loans, it's frankly one of my proud personal accomplishments to come out of a great school like St. Thomas. We moved to Minnetoka because of the awesome schools and because of the natural resources, living near Great Lake and resources of all the parks and trails and trees and open spaces. After moving to Minnetoka, I enrolled in the Minnetoka Citizens Academy and learned a lot about the city, and after that, I volunteered on the Economic Development Advisory Commission for eight years. So I've been involved in the city for quite a while. When Brad Wirson was elected mayor, I sent him a note and said, "Mr. Mayor, you're going to be great. I've been on the commission for a while. I'm going to have to resign in a little while, but I'll give you time to find someone." And I got a nice note back from the city manager saying, "You've actually been on for eight years. That's two four-year terms. Your term limited out, and your next, your last meeting is the next meeting." So I ran because I was encouraged to run. I'm nonpartisan, and I have a spirit of giving back for our community.
Thank you. Next, Brian Kirk.
Great, thank you. I'm running for ward one. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting the forum. Thank you very much. I love Minnetoka. It's a great city to grow up in and a great city to raise your family. I consider myself a lifelong resident. I grew up living just behind Shelley Pizza and attended Hopkins Schools. My family moved near Minnetoka East Junior High when I was 14, and I graduated from Minnetoka High School in '79. I have bachelor's degrees in architecture and design, and I've worked for an architectural firm before starting my 34-year career with the YMCA. I've been an executive director of the Ridgedale YMCA, and I'm now the Director of Architecture and Design for the YMCA Greater Twin Cities. I've been married for 27 years to my best friend Jennifer Kirk, who's a public school teacher. I have three great kids, Cody, Kevin, and Emily. My mother Lynn has been a resident of Minnetoka for 55 years. My father-in-law Peter and Carol moved into Applewood when it first opened, and they absolutely love it. I know and I understand multi-generational life in Minnetoka. I have volunteered in many ways over the years, like coaching youth sports, selling Christmas trees to send kids to camp. I now consider myself a volunteer for the city of Minnetoka. I've been on the Planning Commission for seven years, chairing for the last three. I was on the 2040 Comprehensive Planning Committee. I was also on the Imagine Minnetoka Citizens Steering Committee and the Southwest Light Rail Community Advisory Committee. I know what it means to serve the community and be a servant leader. With my education in architecture, in history in Minnetoka, I have a great perspective and insight when challenged with new development. During my years in Minnetoka, I've seen a lot of change. I predate the Ridgedale Mall. I remember playing an opus when it was just a farm field. I understand when someone says a development will change the character of my neighborhood. I'm running for city council because I will have a strong voice to challenge developers and manage change for a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Lehman is next.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to speak with you. I've been an active member of the Minnetoka community for a long time. The most recent volunteer efforts for the city, I served as Chair of the Minnetoka Park Board for eight years. I was on that board, and I was also Chair of the city's Planning Commission, also serving eight years on that commission. I was a coach, board member, president and co-president for the Glen Lake Girls Athletic League for over 20 years, involved with that. Along with those efforts, I've also volunteered for many school and community efforts. You can see me each December ringing bells for the Salvation Army out in front of the Luns Byerlys in Glen Lake as I coordinate 15 to 30 church members for my church or families to ring those bells. I grew up in Minnetoka. I attended the Glen Lake Elementary School, the West Junior High, and Lindbergh High School. Now it's just a Hopkins High School. In 1984, my wife Peggy and I built our current home and raised our four daughters there. My family is now grown by nine grandkids, and I'm loving all of those, all that comes with those dynamos of joy. Minnetoka is a great place to live. The natural resources, parks and trails and open spaces are near the best in the area. The school systems are great and serve our students well. The business community is strong with a mix of major employers and small businesses. The neighborhood, both small and more village-based, offer residents a variety of choices for where they want to live. These are some of the things I value most about Minnetoka. My 16 years of serving on city's boards and commissions gave me great insight into what it needs to be done to achieve all of these great things the city has to offer. Because of my strong community ties, the commitment I feel towards the city, and the skills I have to offer, I believe I can be a great asset for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Shack.
Thank you. I'm Rebecca Shack. First, I want to thank the League for having us tonight, and to those of you that are celebrating the New Year, thanks for taking time out of your holiday to be here tonight. I know there are a few of you out there. I am the current ward two council member. I was appointed to the position in August 2018 to complete the term vacated by Tony Wagner when he moved out of the ward. Prior to my appointment to the council, I served for just under two years as a Planning Commissioner on the Minnetoka Planning Commission. During that time, I was also appointed to sit on the 2040 Comp Plan Committee to help envision the future for Minnetoka. My husband and I, Mike, my husband Michael and I moved to Minnetoka about seven years ago. Michael works for Medica, and so he works in Minnetoka. And we were immediately attracted to the sense of community, the services Minnetoka provides, the open spaces, and obviously the connected parks and trails. My professional life, I'm a licensed attorney. I have a small law firm in downtown Minneapolis. My law partner and I own the firm, and we practice exclusively in the area of family law. Not only do we provide litigation services for people in some of the worst times in their lives, in the midst of very contentious disputes at times, I'm also a qualified mediator through the state of Minnesota. So I'm available to help people in their disputes and work in a neutral capacity rather than a litigation capacity. The work I do professionally shapes how I handle my work on the council. I am able to help make tough decisions. I'm also able to resolve difficult disputes, and I hope to lead Minnetoka into the future over the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Bradley Sheppi.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, other candidates, and you, the citizens, who showed up tonight and watching. This is what democracy looks like. My name is Bradley Sheppi, candidate for ward three. I'm a real estate and business interning with an office in ward three. I'm a husband to Lizzie, father to a five-week-old girl, Lyndon, and seven-year-old son, Asa. Notably, I'm a centrist, not in a political party. Minnetoka citizens, left, right, and center, all support me. I'm running for a better Minnetoka. It's an amazing place we all call home, but has fallen behind in community engagement. Why does this matter? Simple: cities make better-informed decisions with meaningful citizen input. You, the citizen, pay taxes to run city government and are entitled to a seat at the table like other cities. Citizens across ward three have told me they feel ignored. Others do not participate due to past experiences. None of this is random or inevitable. Their responses are the direct result of few citizen advisory boards, short notice of new development projects, and lack of consistent, long-term investment in true community engagement. The senior advisory board is the notable exception. Its success demonstrates Minnetoka can do community engagement well when citizens have a seat at the table. From unsafe intersections and speed on streets to local plant and bird communities, the Minnetoka citizens are the eyes and ears who have value to add to the staff and the city council. There's a better model out there today. It's actually the city of Edina. Visit BetterTogetherEdina.org, spend 30 minutes, and learn what true engagement looks like, including a full-time staff member. Recent Minnetoka City Hall-driven expenditures include new fire police, city hall renovation, 2020 salary increases, and a $4 million small Ridgedale park. It's time to balance city hall-driven priorities with citizen-driven priorities. In the end, it's about better outcomes and a better Minnetoka. My name is Bradley Sheppi, and I'm running for ward three. I welcome your vote.
Thank you. Now we're going to start the question section of our forum. We'll be rotating to a new starting person every time, so for our first question, we're going to start with Kizzy Cokely, and you'll have one minute to respond. So the question from the audience is, "Please describe a quality or skill you possess that will help you fulfill the responsibilities that you believe are the most important for a city council member."
Thank you for the question. So I am a person who can talk to community members, who can talk to residents, and hear them what they have to say, and listen. I make sure that I consider what other people have to say, bring the information to the table, and just let them know they're being heard. I think that's really important when you're working with community residents. I think it's important to make sure that you listen to your community because that's what running for city council is about. It's not about my decision, it's not about city council, but it's about everyone's decision that lives in Minnetoka who have a voice to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mike Happy.
Thank you. I'm a thoughtful listener. I think it's really important that everybody have a voice, especially everybody in ward three who I represent on both sides of an issue. And we're in a time now where we have some polarizing issues, including at the city level for Minnetoka. I'm really proud, I wouldn't be doing, I'm nonpartisan, I take that really seriously. I wouldn't be doing this if I thought this was a partisan issue. I'm really proud to have people on both sides of the fence endorsing my campaign. You can see that on the website, but the most important thing is that we have engagement from people and someone who listens. I call everybody back. I return emails. I return phone calls. Anyone in ward three who wants to have a voice and be involved can be involved, and that's my commitment to ward three voters, is that you'll have a voice through me.
Thank you. Brian Kirk.
Thank you. So when I started on the Planning Commission seven years ago, I did it because I wanted to get better at public speaking and try to be not so nervous in front of large crowds. That hasn't really happened. But I wanted to be involved in the city. I wasn't sure exactly to what capacity. After seven years of listening to people come up and talk to the Planning Commission about different issues that they see around the city, I realized that that community engagement is just so very important. It's very difficult when you sit up on the dais and listen to people at the podium, but I take notes and I try to answer all of their questions. I found that the real value is when I'm actually out in the audience with the people, really door knocking, visiting with neighbors, having people call me and explain some of the issues that really concern them, and understand what, how they really feel about a development that's coming up or something that's before them. So I feel like I'm a great listener. I'm pragmatic in the way I think, and I'm analytical, which I think helps me process an awful lot of things that come before us. Thanks.
Thanks. Paul Lehman.
Thank you. As the father of four daughters, I couldn't help but be a listener. It was hard to get a word in edgewise for a long time, but that's the one thing I can say is probably the strongest characteristic for me, is my listening skills. In my job, my career, I had 40 years where I had to listen very intently to the needs of the customers of my company. As a head of the softball organization, there was a lot of people who would bring their needs to me so that I could listen to them and make sure I could form or formulate the league in a way that the people would feel that their children were enjoying the services we were providing. And then, of course, the Planning Commission and the Park Board, people are very passionate about their land, and they need to be able to be heard, and I was pleased that I was able to listen as intently as possible and let their voices be heard.
Thank you. Rebecca Shack.
So through high school, college, and law school, I was a waitress, and I worked at Perkins that whole time. And then I became a lawyer. So I would say probably out of the fire into the frying pan, because I think being a lawyer is easier than being a waitress. But those two jobs, as well as my role on the city council, has given me the skills to have a calm demeanor. I think most people that know me know that I'm able to listen, synthesize, and not respond with a defensive knee-jerk reaction. And that is such an important quality for a city council member, because we have to hear all sides of the issue and understand where people are coming from without responding with our opinions right away. And I'm committed to continually to do that after all my years waitressing, lawyering, and now as a council member.
Thank you. Bradley Sheppi.
Thank you. I believe... Thank you. I believe the quality I best have is empathy. So when I'm talking to parents out there who express their concerns, I feel that. I feel that as a parent. I feel their concern. Out there talking in the community, there's parents who live three houses or practically across the street from Groveland Elementary, and they tell me, "We have to drive our kids to school because there's no safe way to get across the street." That stuff touches me. It bothers me. It wants me to try to find a solution. So I would say the, when citizens share their concerns, I also feel it, but most importantly, it's how do we move that forward? What is the process? Is there a solution? And so I want to be a part of those solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Susan Carter.
Thank you. I might offer what some might think is an odd answer to this question, but here goes. In the last couple of years, I made a commitment to get really comfortable in discomfort. I like to surround myself with people that don't see things the way I do, because I think that's where you get to your best truth. And I like newness. I actually represent some newness. I'm the cub council member just appointed in March. But I think if we make a commitment to have brave conversations with one another and we hear things that we don't totally have comfort with, it brings us to the best solution for Minnetoka. And for me, that's all about welcoming difference and embracing new lived experiences. Thanks.
Thank you. Now we're going to move into a couple of financial questions, and we'll be starting with Mike Happy for a one-minute response. So the first financial question here is, "Do you support Minnetoka's use of utility franchise fees or any other funding mechanism to expand its sidewalks and trail system?"
Wow, a tough one out of the chute. We voted on this, and the vote was six to one. The council approved the franchise fees, and I was the one who voted against it. I voted against it not because I don't support the notion that we need more trails and sidewalks and safety in the city. We do. I just felt bad about it from a transparency standpoint for the city, that if we're going to fund it, the franchise fee that we passed for the trails is $1.8 million of additional revenue every year, $4.50 on everybody's gas bill, and what I thought was going to happen, I think has happened, which is most people don't know it. Most people haven't noticed it on their bill, and so that's an additional tax that's hidden. If we wanted to do it, we should have done it as part of the tax levy so we were transparent, and that's why I voted against it.
Thank you. Next, Brian Kirk.
Thank you. So watching this unfold from the audience, I struggled with the idea of using a franchise fee, because I knew that people on fixed incomes and looking for affordable housing opportunities were going to struggle with every penny and dollar. I hear a lot of murmurs in the audience about not even a cup of coffee, but when you're trying to put food on the table, that becomes a problem. I really do believe in trails and sidewalks, and the city needed to do something to try to establish a fund that would constantly try to make those improvements, because we're talking about the safety of people. You know, first the connection between Ridgedale and Minnetoka Boulevard. You know, next the connection between Glen Lake and Shady Oak Road on Excelsior Boulevard. These trails and sidewalks are important safety systems for us, but I'm concerned that if we do too much of this, if it's limited, I'm okay with that. Too much of it, it's going to harm those people who are on fixed incomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Lehman.
My reaction to this is that I'm not in favor of hidden taxes on our community or citizens, and when you make use of certain mechanisms, such as passing it through a utility bill, that doesn't provide the transparency as to what the community really needs to spend on its infrastructure. So I would not be in favor of using that mechanism to support something that's a worthwhile approach, which is funding our trails and sidewalks within the city. But that just isn't, in my opinion, the best way to do it.
Thank you. Rebecca Shack.
Can I ask you to just repeat the question quickly?
Sure. "Do you support Minnetoka's use of utility franchise fees or any other funding mechanism to expand its sidewalks and trail system?" So here next from Rebecca Shack.
Thank you. I was one of those six people that last fall voted in favor of the franchise fee, not because I thought it was a hidden tax. We talked a lot about it. It was in the Minnetoka memo. It was highly publicized, and it shows up on the utility bill every month. But I voted for it because I think the number in trails that we have that we need to get completed in Minnetoka is north of $80 million. And adding the franchise fee allowed us to do that in a consistent, predictable way where there was a funding stream available to make that happen. And not only are those trails really critical for connections and commuting around the city, but I think they're also an environmental component in that... city, but I think they're also an environmental component in that it allows us to help our citizens use alternate modes of transportation, bike, walk, and run, to get to their destinations and get some cars off the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Bradley Sheppi.
Thank you. Some of the thunder's been taken here, but I would say absolutely 100%, I would support what was voted on last year. First, I must say that any tax or any new expenditure on citizens should be fully disclosed. There should be multiple hearings, full transparency. Transparency is one of the cornerstones of my platform. That being said, so long it's properly vetted and everyone knows about it, I personally view this as an investment, not a tax. It's an investment in community health, people that can walk outside of their cul-de-sacs. Many of us live in disconnected neighborhoods, and we need these trails to get out. I was out door knocking in the community in, for example, by Ridge View, or Ridge View up by Ridgedale, there's a senior center, and there's folks who are using walkers in the street because there's no sidewalk or no trail for them. So this is not just about young families. I think this also does benefit our older folks and to have them have a happy life as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Carter.
Thank you. I was not serving on council at the time the franchise fees were voted on, but I too would have supported it. I would have supported it for a variety of reasons, about one of which was already mentioned, which is, one of the challenges we face when we sit on City Council is that if you don't have a dedicated revenue stream for something, and there are so many competing demands for our resources, oftentimes, things that matter to people get lost. And so to create a steady revenue stream for the things we care deeply about, we hear all the time, almost every person up here said they love Minnetonka because of the trails and some of those important things. So I would have supported it. The other thing that I think is important, and Bradley kind of touched on this, is that with all the development happening in Minnetonka, we need connectivity. We need walkability. Seniors need to be able to get out and get to places that are important to them if they no longer drive. This is how we share community with one another. We get out in the world and we walk our community. And I think that's an important piece. Thanks.
Thank you. Finally, Kizzy Coakley.
I would support the franchise fee. The reason why I would support the franchise fee, because I believe that we need to create more sidewalks, we need to create more walking trails, we need to make sure that when people are walking up Excelsior, that they are walking up Excelsior and they're safe. When I think about my son who walked up Excelsior because he didn't have transportation, I think about how he told me once he almost got hit by a car. When I think about my daughter who was walking from school up Excelsior, who also told me that she almost got hit by a car. I think about why we need to expand our sidewalks, expand walking trails, and making sure that everyone can be safe. I also think about bicyclists that's riding their bikes up Excelsior in other parts of Minnetonka who need to make sure that they're safe on those roads as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to have another financial question, and this one will be starting with Brian Kirk. "Do you support the council's recent action to increase the 2020 tax levy for environmental initiatives and why?"
All right. Recent and somewhat controversial, and I'll start it out here. I absolutely do believe in the environment and all that we can do to try to decrease our carbon footprint. You all know that our tax levy was high this year, 7.5, higher than it's normally been. And I know that the council really struggled with this. I did support the decision that was made to increase the levy by $100,000 to help fund the climate initiative. I believe that the city staff will hopefully be able to sharpen their pencils and be able to get that down to 7.5 as a levy before we have to vote on it or before the council has to vote on it in a couple of months. But I think it was worth it. It was worth it to get the climate initiative started now. Our kids just can't wait until later. So I'm hoping that by the middle of next year, we'll see more activity in the area of a climate initiative and maybe even a climate commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Lehman.
Thank you. I believe the approach the city took to fund environmental activities is the right approach. The funding of it is a necessity. We simply have to make sure that we're funding our efforts to address the climate change events that are happening around us. And they did it in the way that I would have supported, unlike the issue with the trails. Not that I was against the trails in any way, but that funding mechanism wasn't the right way to do it. This one, I believe, was the right way to do it, to make sure it's clear that the taxing authority that the city has is what's being used to fund the environmental costs that we have to incur.
Thank you. Rebecca Shack.
Thank you. Again, I was one of the six council members that voted in favor of the $100,000 potential increase. We did ask the staff to see if we could find it in another part of the budget, so if that can happen, that would be great. Minnetonka's been a leader in many ways when it relates to climate issues, and we really need to continue with that and not lose traction on our leadership in that way. And we're taking some bold steps now by participating in the Partners in Energy Program. And I really want to be able to see in 2020 that seamlessly transition to more initiatives such as a sustainability commission and a climate action plan. And without money, we can't make that happen.
Thank you. Bradley Sheppi.
Yes, I would have supported the $100,000. And it's a couple of things. One is, it's a city telling the community, "We support community engagement, we value younger families, we value the voice of students who should have a voice." But I think if you look into the process, there, the folks who present to the climate action plan, I think we can all disagree on the percentage goals and the year and how it's achieved on the front end, but we have to at least recognize the amount of time and the high level of detail and the amount of process that that organization went just to get here. So they've been at it for a long time, and that's an example of citizens volunteering time, wanting to be a part of the city, and that's what it is. So much of the existing tax levy this year, it's not that high because of community engagement. It's because the city made other decisions and other priorities. So yes, it's a tough time to spend that money, but it's a smart time to start investing in community engagement.
Thank you. Susan Carter.
Yep.[1058.33][1058.33](laughter) Yep, I voted for that. I said at that meeting, and I think it's a shared value with the young people, that drove the conversation with the Minnetonka Climate Initiative and had the courage to come and ask hard questions of people that have more power and experience than they do. I believe climate is a singular lens that will inform all our decisions moving forward. It is critical, and it permeates everything we do in the city. And it's been said that a budget is a moral document. And if that's true, that $100,000 represents more than just the resource for a climate action plan or commission. It represents the priorities of the city to make sure that people know we believe it's important. Thanks.
Thank you. Kizzy Coakley.
Hi. So I came to that meeting as well, and I heard what the Climate Initiative had said about wanting to receive the 100, well, they wanted to receive $200,000, and the city voted on $100,000. And so when I thought about that, and I've heard my friends and family talk about why it's important to make sure that we continue a healthy environment, I thought that we should have had the $200,000. And hearing my daughter talk about, she started working with an organization that organized around pollinators, and I was impressed with that. I learned from my daughter, and I learned from people in Minnetonka about why it's important to make sure that we continue to have a healthy environment, and so I would have supported that. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Mike Happy.
I don't think we talk enough about the things the city does that are already underway to save our environment and leave the world a better place for the next generation. We're participating in this Partners in Energy Program. We've committed financial resources for that. We're a Tree City USA, USA Tree City. And by the end of this year, the city's going to be 100% dependent on solar energy for all city facilities. We're doing a lot. So now, the second question, that there was a six to one vote on and I voted no against. I voted no against the levy, 7.75%. That's a huge burden, particularly on people with fixed incomes. So, you know, darn near 8%. On average, the city is run, from a financial standpoint, really well and really strongly. And over the last 20 years, our average levy increase has been about 4%. So this is twice as high, and I just thought it was too much, so I voted no against it.
Thank you. We're going to move on to another question from the audience. "What steps will you personally take to connect with and advocate for Minnetonka residents who might feel out of place in our mostly white and affluent city?" And we will start with Paul Lehman.
A similar question was asked to me in a previous forum, and my answer was that I believe we need to be not thinking that we have the answers, but we need to find a way to listen to those who have a voice or have an opportunity to present information to the City Council or myself in particular, that would inform me of the issues and understanding around that that I might not be able to have. So my approach would be to make sure that we have a mechanism, a step that allows us to listen to those who have an interest in this particular subject and can present their issues to me and help me understand how to go about getting, coming to the right decisions about how to go forward.
Thank you. Next, Rebecca Shack.
Thank you. I think it's important that when we look at welcoming other demographics, whether it's gender, race, socioeconomic demographics, that we give people that aren't like me, like the council that we have seated right now, a voice. We need to reexamine how we're selecting folks to interview for and to sit on our commissions. We have to constantly look at how we're hiring staff and the decisions we're making on who to interview and who to give positions to. And hopefully, that will generate experience and diversity then that bubbles up to the council level. It's not only important to have those people be a part of the discussion at a foundational level, but we also need to be available for those discussions on a one-on-one basis.
Thank you. Bradley Sheppi.
Thank you. I think the answer is, go to them, invite them, discover where they are in the community, meet them, where they are. I can say specifically that in my door-knocking campaign, I visited the Cliffs apartment building in Ward Three. I never knew there was a significant South Asian population in Minnetonka ever. Now I do, because I went to them. I now know that they're there. From a city perspective, I think that that's an example of what do the activities that we schedule as a city look like and who are they for? And have we asked other folks who may be underrepresented what they would like to do or what type of activities they would like to see in the summer or type of music? So I think it starts with just going to them and inviting them to the table, and that also, long-term, can be through a more organized citizen advisory board on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Carter.
Thank you for the good question. My tagline in my campaign is "Where You Belong." And the theme of the work is about creating a sense of belonging for people who don't feel they have a place. They haven't met their people or their faith community. They're unsure about how they fit in in their neighborhood. And so how do we do this? Well, first of all, we ask this question, right? The good question. We acknowledge isolation in our communities. People don't know how to engage, so when we say and we throw around this idea of community engagement, community engagement, it's great and it's well-intended, but we need to be very intentional with personal invitations. Go worship at Destiny Hill Church. If you aren't a congregant there, go rock and roll with the pastor. It's amazing. And then also, for me, it's about encouraging growth and courage, and it's about being okay with discomfort, being in rooms with voices you haven't heard and people you don't know, because I think that's where the real growth happens and that's where we start to create a shared sense of community.
Thank you. Kizzy Coakley.
So I believe that actually making sure that you do go and knock on doors, you do go invite people to come to events and come to City Hall and educate them about what it's like to be at the City Hall. Introduce them to other people who don't look like them. Invite them into your space. I think that's really important. It's one thing to say what you can do, but it's one thing to actually do it. I've been in Minnetonka for 11 years, and I've said this before, there's only been two door knockers at my door, and I think it should have been more. And so I would encourage you to really just do it. Go talk to people. Welcome them to your space. And don't wait for them to have to take their own space.
Thank you. Mike Happy.
I don't know of anyone in the city of Minnetonka who doesn't want this to be a welcoming place for people who want to live and work in the city. We know from the Met Council that in the next two decades, we're going to have 10,000 new residents move into Minnetonka. And the result of that is clearly going to be a change in the demographics of the makeup of our town. The city started a Diversity and Inclusion Committee in 2017 and joined the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, or GARE, in 2018. But I think this issue really starts with leadership of the city. And we can check that box, because we have a united leadership at the city that is unified on the idea and the notion that we want to be welcoming to all in this city. And I think there's more that we can do. And what I really would like to do is hear from citizens in Ward Three on additional steps that we can and should be taking.
Thank you. Finally, Brian Kirk.
Thank you. And after all this time of thinking about it, I should have a right answer, right? But there really isn't one. This is a continuum of learning. Is Minnetonka really welcoming to all? Are we welcoming to all when we talk about rental property or low-income housing or affordable housing? We need to recognize that we all hold unconscious biases and recognize our own white privilege when it comes to trying to address this issue. We need to realize that people aren't going to come to us, we need to come to them. I know that's been said. But when you put something in a newsletter, you can't expect that people are going to come out if they don't feel welcome. You've got to get to their neighborhood. We also, as a city, we also need to make sure that we're taking absolutely decisive direction whenever we're involved in any kind of hate crimes. It was very humbling to know that our mayor was at Destiny Hill within a week or so of the hate crimes that happened earlier this year. It makes me proud to live in Minnetonka. I want to be proud of us and be able to be welcoming for all, but we're on a continuum of learning. Thank you.
All right. We're going to start with a new question, and this one will be addressed to Rebecca Shack first. "What efforts should the city make to encourage the development of affordable housing in Minnetonka?"
Thank you. That's my baby, my favorite question. It's probably one of those questions without a direct answer. We need to dig deep and partner with not only developers and private entities, but with our other public resources. We need to look to the state, we need to look to the counties and the Met Council to not only encourage these development projects, but also to facilitate them. As Commissioner Kirk indicated, we have a bias, I think, against putting affordable housing in our backyard. And we've got to overcome that bias and find the money and find the wherewithal to make it happen. There's a lot of resources there, but we have to actually coalesce and get those resources so that we can meet our goals for affordable housing over the next 10 to 20 years.
Thank you. Bradley Sheppi.
Thank you. I think the affordable housing issue is very complicated. For starters, cities, including Minnetonka, make new market-rate housing expensive, right? We have the Doran Project, the market-rate housing, and they're paying over $800,000 in... in park fees, right? So you can't build new housing that meets any type of, like, let's say, not-high price point. Plus, we have our, generally, our minimum lot sizes, right? So we've decided as a community to take most of the land available for affordable housing off, because you just quite frankly can't do it. So I think we just need to acknowledge that. Beyond that, I think it's resources, right? It's how much time and energy is the city putting into in identifying parcels and partners and working all the, through the details of tax credit. So it comes down to priority, and citizens, I would say, continuing to ask their council members, "What are you doing specifically about this?" And seeing if they have a good answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Carter.
Thank you. I have said this before, but I do believe that affordable housing, safe, affordable, accessible housing, is the precursor to achieving all measures of well-being. It is the fundamental piece all residents need to thrive and survive in our community. So having said that, there are a couple of things that have happened. Recently, we passed an affordable housing policy for the city, which my colleague, Tim Bergstadt, who serves on the council, said so aptly, "You know, 20 years ago, it wasn't a lens. We talked about it sporadically, and now it is the thing in which we look at when we're thinking about all developments." I think we need to continue to do that. I think creative partnerships are critical. I think that the policy will help shape that. And then, you know, lastly, we're listening to what communities need, and we're advocating for where those projects can happen. Thanks.
Thank you. Kizzy Coakley.
So one of the things I think should happen is, one, is undoing the biases. So making sure we have listening sessions around the biases around housing that's affordable. Two, partnering with nonprofits and making sure that the nonprofits can help with finances around housing that is affordable. In addition, making sure that, like, when we have developers coming to Minnetoka and build houses or homes, making sure that the, like, if they build a big complex, the ones that they say they're going to allocate toward affordable housing, making sure that they keep those affordable rental property. Because sometimes when developers say that it's going to be affordable, then it increases and it's no longer affordable. So making sure that they continue to keep those affordable units.
Thank you. Mike Cappy.
We have a plan. We have a 20-year comprehensive plan for the city. It's our strategic plan, and a big part of this strategic plan for the next decade is focusing on housing. And where are we going to put all those 10,000 residents I mentioned that the Met Council has said are going to move into our city? We recently passed, as a council, a policy on development requiring a certain percentage of new construction to be affordable. I guess one of the things I'm struggling with and disappointed in is I don't think we have enough focus on owned housing. A lot of what we're going to see in the next two decades is rental housing, and there's a lot of merit for people and society in a community to have more owned housing than rental housing. We have a lot of first responders in the city that can't afford to live in the city, police and fire people, and in fact, all city employees. I'd like to find a way that we could actually have some sort of program to support policemen, fire people, police people, teachers, and all city employees to be able to affordably live in the community where they work and serve and be part of our community.
Thank you. Brian Kirk.
Great, thank you. It's a very complex question, and I mentioned that I'm pragmatic, and I try to break these sorts of things down. You know, our, one facet of this that we have to struggle with all the time is the fact that Minnetoka is so developed right now. When we talk about putting greater density into our neighborhoods, we're talking about apartment buildings right next to neighborhoods. And I understand why people struggle with that. But in order to really reach our goals, our 2040 comp plan goals, we've got to not just have 20% of units in an apartment building at 50% AMI. We're going to need to find a lot of units at 30% AMI. Those are people who are struggling to actually keep housing. We've got a great opportunity in Ward One with the light rail coming through. There's a fair amount of undeveloped property down there, but I don't want to exclusively pick that area as affordable housing pocket. I think it's important that we spread affordable housing across Minnetoka. I also believe that it's important to protect natural occurring affordable houses, people, housing, homes that people own. If the city can provide programs to allow low-income families to benefit from low-interest loans to keep those houses affordable. Thank you.
Thanks. And finally, we'll hear from Paul Lehman.
I believe we are all better off if all of the housing needs of our community can be met, including affordable housing, including housing that's well-suited for our aging population. There is no magic bullet. If there was, we would have found it by now, and we'd be well on our way to solving this problem. I think what we have to do is to be very pragmatic, go forward with the steps that we have identified are successful, and to keep working those, keep working them hard. And that includes accepting that there are going to be parts of the community where we need to increase the density of our population or our housing units, that we look at making concerted effort to bring in those who can develop affordable housing. Not every developer has that ability to produce affordable housing stock in our community, but we need to be able to find ways that we can do that.
Thanks. So our next question will be starting with Bradley Sheppi, and I apologize, it's kind of a long question, but you'll get the idea. How do you feel about the transportation options currently available in Minnetoka? Do we have enough options? If not, what will you do to increase those?
Thank you. Obviously, transportation includes lots of different modes, right? From walking, bicycling, transit. Generally speaking, we don't have the density that will support transit without a lot of subsidies. However, there's things that we can do to support the folks where on the bus lines we do have, first of all. On Highway Seven, you have basically a sign on the sidewalk. There's no bench, there's nothing there that really encourages them, or welcomes them to actually ride transit and get to where they're going. There's lots of households who'll have "Share One House." My cousin is one of them. And they share one car, I'm sorry. And that bus allows them to decrease their household costs. Beyond that, it's a function of, in my opinion, community engagement. What does the community want? Is there, for instance, like the city of Viedina, a transportation advisory board, a transportation commission, where those voices are regularly heard? This is what we need. This is what we think we need, versus the city basically deciding for them. So I think, long-term, it's more citizen voices. Thank you.
Thanks. Susan Carter.
Thank you. So I think my general observation is that I don't think there's enough options. I think a multimodal strategy is always going to be the best way to address the variety of needs of our community. I'll also sound like an old person now, but the way I understand it, most young people don't even want to buy cars anymore. They see them as liabilities. So they want alternate options for transportation, and they're eager to use it. The other is, not unlike some of the other topics we've talked about, we need to de-stigmatize public transportation. I think people have an opinion about who rides the bus and who rides rail. And I think if we did a better job educating people about its efficiencies, its economies of scale, its economic and environmental impacts, we'd get more ridership coming out of Minnetoka, going to places people need to be. Thanks.
Thanks. Kizzy Coakley.
So I think we need more transportation in Minnetoka. I would use my voice on the council to advocate, to Met Council, for more frequent and more reliable bus services, especially on the evenings and weekends. I also hope to make our streets safer for pedestrians and cyclists. I will advocate for the infrastructure improvements that result in greater safety. In addition, if we can make our city less dependent on cars, we can have immediate impacts on our city's long-term environmental health. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Cappy.
So the translation is always the debate between public versus private transportation. And we have a lot of options today on both, but we have a, we have a good, the city has a good relationship with the Metro Transit Commission from a bus service standpoint, but it's all about numbers in their business and how many people ride the bus. We heard about a rough decision a couple months ago about the MTC canceling one of the bus routes. And they, you couldn't argue with it, because nobody was riding the bus on that route. So we have to have things that are available for people where they are. There is a MetroLink program that's kind of a safety net for people who need some level of public transportation support. And the light rail is coming. It's coming, and that is a game changer. And we'll be, we're already working heavily on how that's going to work, what the stations are going to look like, and what the city support services are going to be around the station in what's going to be the very near future.
Thank you. Brian Kirk.
Thanks. Let's be honest, we love our cars, don't we? I mean, the idea of giving up our car or ride a bus or take the light rail is probably pretty foreign to most of us in the room. But it's really a matter of trying to connect jobs with homes, right? People that need transportation to be able to get to work. Everybody's excited about the LRT, because they'll be able to go down to the Twins game, but that's not what the LRT is all about. The LRT is about being able to get people who are trying to access the workforce. You hear people talk about the bus line, and it never seems that convenient. And when a line does get canceled, you hear a lot of concern. And it's not fair to say that nobody rides the line, because if even one or two people were using it to get to work or get to the grocery store, it has an impact on just one or two people. I think that we can definitely capitalize on the LRT coming in. I was on the CAC when they cut a lot of funding for the LRT, and it mostly affected Eden Prairie. But there's a lot of talk about the connectivity, the kiss-and-ride, the bike-and-ride, to get people connected vertically, horizontally, to the stops to get access to different job opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Lehman.
The quick answer to the question is that I think there's room for improvement in transportation systems within the city of Minnetoka. The LRT will do a good job, I think, of helping us get residents within the city to other locations outside the city, but we also have to make sure that we can find ways for the residents to get around within the city. That, I think, is probably the thing that would help the community out the most at this point in time. Again, the issue there is that you've got to have the volume of riders to support a bus line or a bus route that would do so. We've had that on and off over the years, and it just simply doesn't seem to support. So, again, I don't think there's a magic bullet as to what it is, but I think we need to be taking all steps necessary to look at options that could be used to improve the transportation around the city of Minnetoka.
Thank you. Rebecca Shack.
Thank you. So things are going to get a lot better with light rail, but we're going to have a problem. We're going to continue to have the problem of first mile, last mile connectivity. That is where the problem is here in Minnetoka. And we really have to be creative, because I don't think the answer lies in our traditional idea of transit and buses and trains. We have to look at public-private partnerships. When I look at that, 614 was the route that got canceled and went right up Plymouth Road. And, you know, I had a bus stop in my yard that I didn't know about probably until about three years of living there, like, "Oh, there's a bus stop here?" Nobody ever stopped there. And the data we got was that those rides were $50 to $100 a ride because of the number of riders. But look at what we might be able to do if we think out of the box with vouchers. We've got Uber, we've got Lyft. We could probably get somebody from here to Ridgedale for $7 a ride if we thought about things in a different way.
Thank you. This might be our last question. It depends if I can squeeze in another, so be prepared for what it might be. So we're going to start with Susan Carter. If you could change one thing in Minnetoka, what would it be and why?
I wish I were last. Just kidding. I think that there are opportunities that surround Minnetoka and the city's work. But I'll be honest, in saying that in the short time I've served on city council, one of the things I'd like to see more of is big old conversations, hard questions, people standing up for what they believe in, and having more comfort in the discourse. I know that it's hard sometimes when we've got a line out the door into the restroom of people that want to speak to the thing that matters most to them. But to me, democracy is people coming out and saying their truth, protecting things they feel are sacred, and being heard and seen by their city government. So that's what I think we can improve upon, encouraging more of that kind of discourse.
Thank you. Kizzy Coakley.
Can you repeat that question one more time for me?
Yeah, sure. If you could change one thing in Minnetoka, what would it be and why?
I would change, I would include more diversity. I have to say that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be here if I didn't say that. How about that? The reason why is because when I see Minnetoka, it is a beautiful place to live. It's very nice, and you feel included. But when you see people in Minnetoka and you're looking for someone on your street, or you're looking for someone in your child's classroom, or you're looking for someone at the park that look like you, and you don't see it, and you've been here for 11 years, it's hard. I know it's hard for my children. I know it's been hard for me. Yes, Minnetoka is growing and diversity is increasing, but I would say I still would want more. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Cappy.
I'd like to see more support for our first responders. We're on the verge of building a new police and fire facility right next to this building here, putting on a huge addition and renovating the existing facility. It's going to cost $30 million. $30 million is a lot. We'll bond for about $25 million of it. The city has AAA bonding authority. We're one of only 6% of cities in the United States that can have that kind of high-quality bonding authority. We need the facility. It's a lot of money to spend, but support for our first responders who take care of us is hugely important. And that's why I mentioned earlier this notion of trying to figure out some way to have an affordable housing program to allow more firefighters and more police personnel and more teachers, and actually, all city employees to live in our city, I think is really important.
Thank you. Brian Kirk.
Oh, it's a tough one, because I love Minnetoka so much. I think we've got friendly neighborhoods and great schools. I really wish that we were more welcoming and inclusive and more diverse. I wish that. I don't know that I can make that happen, but I think we can take strides in trying to reach that. I wish that Minnetoka was more affordable. We have a lot of people that want to move into Minnetoka, but it's just so expensive to live here. New housing is just unbelievable, coming in at $600,000, $800,000 for a home. And even when we build new apartment buildings, it's still expensive to live in Minnetoka. It's just difficult. I think that Minnetoka is a great community. I support it 100%. I hear a lot about being transparent. You know, as a planning commissioner, I want to take the time to listen to people and make sure that they feel heard. But I know that it's difficult when some things just don't go in your favor. So I guess I wish that we could be more inclusive when it comes to interacting with people and more transparent. Thank you.
Thanks. Paul Lehman.
Well, here's a case where, unlike Susan, I wish I could have been first, because there are so many great ideas that have been expressed here. Two things maybe that I might change. One, I would wish that I didn't have a concern about the aging infrastructure of the city, because I think we've got a potential for some troubles down the road with the aging infrastructure. So that's kind of a boring one. The other one would be if there's a way to come up with a, the city to be more a community, a tighter community. The city is a large city, and there are diverse portions of the city, whether you're Ridgedale or the southwest corner of the city, and things are quite different when you travel across the city. If they were able to find a way to be a little bit more... If we, if they were able to find a way to be a little bit more collegial in, in small-townish, I guess is the way I would look at it.
Thank you. Rebecca Scheck?
Thank you. I wish we could see a little more cohesion. You know, we've got three school districts represented here in Minnetoka. We've got village centers, which are just lovely, and we, but we don't have a downtown. We've got very high open enrollment, both in Minnetoka and in the Hopkins School District, less so in Wayzata, because they've got their own issues. But I think if we were able to come together cohesively, there would be less us versus them, we'd see less contentious discourse when it comes to building affordable housing, when it comes to taking on big city projects. Maybe we could all sit down at the table together in a way that is more collaborative and less contentious.
Thank you. Bradley Sheppi?
This one's really easy. More citizen advisory boards. Mike, I wish I had a magic wand, could change that. Basically, what it does is, if you have that in place, you have a mechanism for these voices and concerns to percolate from the bottom up, right? So, I think we just need to also understand that the time of the city council members, the time of staff, the time, the time of the mayor, that's all limited. And what's unlimited and untapped is the time, resource, knowledge of all the experts we have in this community that have so much to add and are not being invited to the table because we've made, we've made a decision. The budget has a specific priority. How much of that is, isn't, is for community engagement? That's a decision. And so, my wish would be for more community engagement. So, for those, anyone who's, who's called and, and raised a concern, and they feel isolated, through the community, I'm sorry, the citizen advisory boards, these folks will feel empowered, they'll feel connected to the city, and great things will happen. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to squeeze in a thirty-second response time question. So, we're going to start with Kizzy Coakley. So, I'm going to just time it, timer, thirty seconds. What is your position on adding a mountain bike trail into Lone Lake Park?
That's a hard one. Well, after hearing some people in, in Minnetoka and realizing that there's hard, there's people for both, there's some people that's not for, there's some people for. Well, after listening and finding out the impact that it has on the trails, I would say I would be against building bike trails.
Thanks. Mike Cappy?
I really hated this one, because it was a totally divisive issue for the city. We had people with strong feelings on both sides. We voted for it, and one of the things that, that I pushed for that we got into this as some attempt to compromise was the notion that in two years, we do a formal study and make sure that we're not wrecking the park. Nobody wants to wreck the park. So, we're going to do that. I voted for it under that condition. It was a compromise. And I know there's a lot of people who are not happy about it, because they think we're going to wreck the park. If I thought we were going to wreck the park, I wouldn't have voted for it. I don't think we're going to wreck it, but we'll make darn sure we don't.
Thank you. Brian Kirk?
All right, thirty seconds. I would have supported the mountain bike trail, but I would have supported it with conditions. That's a beautiful park, Lone Lake, and, and I don't want to see it destroyed. I don't want to see it damaged. I want to make sure that we've got setbacks from our property lines. I want to make sure that the density of the trail system allows for habitat. I want to make sure that those people who are walking are able to do it safely. In any kind of a comp plan that comes before the city, we get an opportunity to see something in greater detail than what, that's the word, stop. I'm just going to come and talk to me, and I'll, I'll let you know more while I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Lehman?
My answer, I have to go back to the park board issue brought before the park board, and I voted against it at that time. And I did it on the set of the facts that were in place at that time, not knowing the full extent of the set of facts that were involved in the decision at this point in time. I can't guarantee I would have made that same decision, but I would believe I would probably make that decision to, to vote against the bike trail in Lone Lake Park.
Rebecca Scheck? My fellow council members, as, as Councilmember Happy indicated, this was a very, we all agree, this was an extremely tough decision. And I voted against the trail, because I didn't, I don't believe that we can successfully, given the size of the park, successfully host a multi-use trail that will accommodate both walkers and mountain bikers in the park the size of Lone Lake. I'm supportive of mountain biking, and had the park been a little bigger, had we had a way to accommodate the walkers and the bikers, I would have been in favor.
Bradley Sheppi?
I'm a mountain biker and a lover, a lover of quiet places. That park has historically been quiet. I think the, the lack of leadership on the city's perspective was to look at, are there more alternatives other than zero or four point seven miles of trail in that park? I think there's special places in that park. I hope the city can still continue to look to find ways to protect quiet areas of that park, particularly west of the lake. But if you're asking me, would I support four point seven miles or zero, I would have voted against four point seven. I would have fought for a compromise, which is, let's dip our toe in the water and act more like other cities with similar-sized parks and start with three miles. Thanks.
And finally, Susan Carter?
Thank you. This was a tough one, as the new kid on the block, and wanting to please all the people, knowing you'd absolutely disappoint at least half of them in the room. I, I did vote for the bike trail. I did it for three reasons. I believe that the data provided by experts evidenced that we can minimize the damages to the park, and those were provided by people much smarter than I am. It was my attempt to balance a variety of interests, both the park and the supporters of the habitat and the bike trail. And lastly, as my colleague Mike Cappy said, to build in checks and balances, so that if we made a bad decision or we're learning new things, we can make a choice to change the direction of the decision that was made. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody, for shortening your statements. And so, now we'll go with closing statements. You have one minute, and we'll start with Mike Cappy.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's really important and really awesome to have people engaged in this process, so it's great to see you all here. I love Minnetoka. It's truly been an honor for me to serve on the city council for the last year and a half. I'm nonpartisan, and I listen to both sides. I'm super proud to have people on both sides of the aisle who endorse my campaign, and they're listed on my website. I promise Ward Three residents a voice in the process. I'm accessible to residents, and I return everybody's call and everybody's email, even people outside Ward Three. You can find my details, my personal background and history and, and positions on Facebook or on my website, which is happyforminnetoka.com. And remember, it's happy with an E. Please vote for me on November 5th, or anytime up until then. Early voting or absentee voting is already open now, and thank you again.
Thank you. Brian Kirk?
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I love Minnetoka. I will work to protect the character of our neighborhoods as we search for better opportunities for affordable housing that will improve the diverse fabric of our city. We need to be ready to embrace opportunities when they benefit the city, but we need to have a very strong voice when they don't. I will be as transparent as possible through this process. I love our beautiful parks and the greenways that we all enjoy. I want to support and see a climate action plan in place. We need it now, because our children can't afford till later. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this great opportunity this evening. And I'd like to close really by thanking Bob Ellingson. I want to thank you first for beating me four years ago in my campaign. It was a learning experience. As it turns out, this was a great opportunity to learn from you, Bob, how you run a great campaign, how you doorknock and put yard signs out like a machine. You're a great servant leader, you've been a great mentor and a friend now. Thank you, Bob, for your sixteen years of services, service to the city of Minnetoka. I'll do my best to continue your work, if elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Lehman?
I want to again thank the League of Women Voters and everyone who showed up here tonight or who is watching the broadcast to listen to the great questions that we were asked to answer and some of the well-founded answers or responses that the candidates were able to provide. Hopefully, hopefully you've gained some insight into all of us that will help you make your decision on who to vote for. Please share your thoughts with your friends and neighbors to help them be informed voters as well. Most importantly, vote on November 5th. Municipal elections tend to have low turnout, but I remind you, every vote counts, every vote is important, every vote makes a difference. Therefore, I ask, will you vote? And of course, please vote for Paul Lehman on November 5th.
Thank you. Rebecca Scheck?
Thank you. Minnetoka has a long legacy of strong leadership and happy residents. And my goal as a candidate and as a council member is to continue with that strong leadership and happy residence as we grow into the future. And maintaining what we have, the good services, the beautiful parks, the connectivity, doesn't mean that we don't evolve and grow to meet the future demands and be welcoming to all residents, race, gender, sexual orientation, religion. I am the right candidate for, I have the background, the experience, and the demeanor to help lead Minnetoka into the future, and I appreciate your vote on November 5th.
Thank you. Bradley Sheppi?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Obviously, commented at length before about community engagement. I'm going to just close a little bit separate from that. I'm a real estate attorney, and I deal on a daily basis with a high level of detail. One, earlier this year, a development project of the Walzer Nissan was proposed across the wetlands from my neighborhood. And one word in that code changed whether or not a whole entire berm and trees were going to stay or not. So, a lot of us talk about the character of Minnetoka, and we want to protect certain specific things. I can tell you whether, what the house looks like next door when it's rebuilt, and what trees stay or don't stay are all in that code. So, if we're really going to fight for what we like and what we want and what we want to preserve, it's going to take someone who not only shares your concerns, but can actually articulate and help move the city forward if there are shortcomings in that code, to make sure we truly are protecting Minnetoka. And I thank you for your time, and I, I, I hope you consider my candidacy and go to bradshappi.com for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Carter?
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting the event, and, most importantly, for the folks that are watching at home, and for you folks that are sitting in the room for modeling what really healthy and hearty conversation looks like. I think it's great. While serving on council, I've stood up for hard things, things I think residents care about and believe in. Firefighters, police officers, infrastructure projects, I think Paul said they're not very exciting, but they ensure quality services for all residents, smart growth and climate, and I'll continue to do that if elected. When I set out on a path to service, I believe residents were ready to embrace a new point of view. They wanted a new perspective and lived experience and a commitment to brave conversation. So, I am really proud to be accessible, to be a student of the issues willing to learn, and I'm eager always to hear all sides of an argument. So, if these things, these qualities are values you also share, I'd ask for your vote on November 5th. Thanks.
Thank you. Kizzy Coakley?
Thank you, League of Women Voters and Minnetoka residents for coming out tonight, and thank you for Minnetoka residents who's watching. You heard a lot about experiences. I'm grateful to everyone who has given their volunteer time to sit on Minnetoka's boards and commissions. Let me remind you a bit about my experiences. I have been a homeowner in Fourth Ward for 11 years. I have been a single mother. I have been a renter experiencing concerns over where my next rent is coming from. I would be an advocate and example for our community and underrepresented voices. I am the change that Minnetoka needs for Fourth Ward City Council, who will listen and address concerns. Please vote for me between now and November 5th. You can follow my campaign on Facebook, Instagram, or votkissy.com. Thank you again for listening and being here tonight.
Thank you to the candidates, the audience, and those viewing the forum on cable and video for your participation in this candidate forum. This forum has been broadcast live on community cable TV and will be rebroadcast until the election on November 5th. You can also see www.lwvmeph.org for a link to the streaming video. We now conclude our formal event. You are welcome to meet the candidates informally in the lobby outside the double doors. This room will be closed at 8:30. Thank you.[1782.35][1782.35]